Critically important that the park have an administrative home and specified ownership and that that be under the Parks Commission so that the efforts that have gone into it thus far, recently, as well as all of the community efforts in the past can continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Byron Lane?
Good evening. Byron Lane, 18 Merrill Street. In the same light, I'm here to speak on behalf of the park. I actually grew up on Milk Street and I can't tell you the countless hours that I've spent in that playground. I also have a nine-month-old son and I would love to take him as soon as he can start walking and just play. So please, I ask of you to do the right thing and give the Brown School Park. Thanks.
Thank you.
Nine months.
That's it for publics. Move on to the very short consent agenda which consists, as even Mr. President, of just a minute.
Motion approved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Poll? One to the right over gentleman. Communication number one. It is a letter from Kathy Haywood with respect to a request to hold a public forum on the Bollows, October 6, 2013, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. In order to allow the candidates to speak, she would have a public address system. It will be free of charge to the city. She says also in her note, you can see that it would be for school committee members also. I don't know if you want me to read the whole thing, Mr. President.
Motion approved.
Second. Vote to vote?
Motion approved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Counselor Earl?
I have a problem with this. I just don't know if this is a city-sanctioned event. What is the difference between this and a busker coming here and performing? Really, that's what this is. Now it's becoming sanctioned by the city that we are giving over space. Maybe that doesn't mean anything, but there's just something odd about it. I don't know if we have any purview, honestly, because anyone can get up and stand up and speak. A busker can bring out an instrument and play. So I'm not sure the difference. I'm all for it. I just don't know if we need to vote on it.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Counselor Earl's there. It's, you know, same thing. People are holding political signs on the Bollows on Saturday morning, so I don't think we need to do any of that. I urge to take back the approval and second and receive them thought.
Counselor Earl?
Not to kill us, I guess the only exception would be amplification. Do they need approval for amplification? I guess thinking that, I guess, might be under approval in second thought. I'm not sure. Because I don't believe you're going to amplify music without approval. Is that correct? Getting a nod from the clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. If Ms. Haywood's proposal was to do this out of public park, it would require a permit to be approved by the Parks Commission. I think this is no different, except that the City Council has authority for this particular public area, so I have no problem with it either way.
Any further discussion?
What's the question?
The voters to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Poll? Communication two?
Address to Thomas F. O'Brien. Dear Counsel O'Brien, I'm seeking permission to dog park area at Cashman Park between the hours of 9:15 and 10:30 a.m. on Sunday, October 6th, to benefit the Dean Geiger Crisis Center. Intalox annually supports the center's Walk Against the Massacre Violence. We've created a unique approach to rally our staff, including their four-legged friends. To thank our supporters who would like to gather in the park for refreshments and send off-leash funding directly after the walk, wondering if you could provide us with a special permit for this one-time use? Would you apply for any special requirements? Mr. Stanley Rodman Spiro, Director of Operations for Intalox.
Motion approved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Poll? Jim Kinson, Trigg.
The late file, Mr. President. It is a letter addressed to you, members of City Council, representing Yankee Clipper Council's Boy Scout America PAC 21 as their pub-con fundraising cheer. Pub-con fundraiser is the only fundraiser we have and supports our annual operating budget. Requesting use of space at Market Square to set up a couple of tables for what we call a show and sell.
Motion approved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Poll? City floor, thank you.
I should say, Mr. President, that was from Kathleen Betts, PAC 21, PubCon Kermit.
Appointment, second reading.
Second reading of appointments. The appointments are Paul V. Bertrand, 1 Mosley Place, Newburyport Trust Fund, September 30th, 2016, followed by Malcolm Carnway, 22 Strong Street, to the Historical Commission until September 30th, 2015, Craig Goodrich, 3 Dal Logan Drive, Salisbury, Special Police Officer, Alan M. McGuire, 15 Lincoln Ave., Special Police Officer. And a reappointment, Julie Langwron, 13 Cushing Street, Salisbury, as treasurer until August 30th, 2016.
Motion approved collectively. Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Motion approve all five appointments. Counselor Derrigan?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Harquist?
Yes.
Counselor Hearsaw?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connel?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien?
Yes.
Move on to orders. Order number one, file two, playground.
Order number one is right here. Be as follows, dated September 30th, that upon sale, lease, or removal from service as a public school of any portion of the buildings and grounds of the G.W. Brown Elementary School, MAPS 21 Parcell 3 and 26, the City of Newburyport shall dedicate and hold permanently for public park and playground uses under the meaning of Chapter 45, as John Maron, "Area of such site that is at least equal in size to the schoolyard currently located on the southeastern portion of the site, including the mulched area for play equipment, the basketball court, the so-called amphitheater, and that this order is subject to any and all votes required by the Newburyport School Committee." Submitted jointly to counselors Gregory D. Earls and Ari D. Hearsaw.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Poll? Order canvas. Order number two.
Order number two is as follows, dated September 30th, that the City Council of the City of Newburyport release for public inspection all executive session minutes pertaining to the ongoing problems with Plum Island water and sewer services, as well as all test results related to materials used in building the water and sewer system on Plum Island. Submitted Counsel Richard D. Sullivan.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. This really is about open government, okay? I am asking simply for the release of the executive sessions pertaining to the problems with Plum Island water and sewer, and from what I understand, the test results have been back for a month and a half. That's from what I understand. Like I said, this is really about open government. The people on Plum Island, the people that are paying for this system to be built, the people that are paying the betterment charge every month, the people that are paying for the repairs as these problems arise, deserve to know, without any speculation or continued rumor, what is going on with that system. This is not asking for the executive session minutes with regards to strategy and litigation. It's simply to inform the people on Plum Island. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a taxpayer and resident of Plum Island, I stand in direct opposition of both this order and its intentions, which are clearly the result of this being an election year. As we continue to investigate this matter, we need to remain mindful of the best interests of the residents of Plum Island and the city. We have been advised by our council and the Attorney General's Office that discussions regarding litigation strategy and the specifics of potential problems not be made public until we have a better handle on the situation. I ask, what is this order trying to accomplish other than enhance political ambitions? Is this council in a better position to determine what should be made public and what should not be made public than the attorneys representing the city or the AG who represents the best interests of not only Newburyport residents but the Commonwealth? If this is approved, I sincerely hope that this council is ready to accept 100% of the responsibility for any and all impacts this has on the city's position moving forward. I am speaking for the residents of Plum Island when I say, please protect our interests throughout this. Please do so by voting this down.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not a gambling person. The last time I played poker was probably when I was 14-years-old and there was nowhere else to go except hanging out with your friends with a deck of cards, but my analogy would be that if we, the city, were playing poker against, you know, people and entities that were involved in the construction of this project, and they saw their cards, we saw our cards, and we wanted to show our friends and family how, you know, the hand that we had, and we just picked it up and just waved it and showed all the world to see, including our opponents, what we had in our hand, that would be analogous to what we would be doing here. I know Counselor Sullivan said this would not be a release of the minutes, but the order says, "Release for public inspection, all executive session minutes." I would rather not have City Council distracted by trying to create some sort of very redacted set of minutes from these executive sessions. I think they need to be focused on whatever the negotiations are with those entities involving the Attorney General's Office as well. I think folks who live on Plum Island and the ratepayers for our entire water and sewer system need to know that the council has been informed by the mayor as this has gone along through a couple of executive sessions, and I know that they would have every confidence that they've been in the room like we have. So I don't see that it serves any purpose other than to undermine any ongoing litigation that we may be involved in.
Any further discussion? Counselor Earl?
I don't know if this is something I want to vote on right now. I would rather, I'd feel more comfortable having a go-to committee to really airing it out what it all means. And I don't know if that would be general government, which probably makes the most sense, or if it'd be public utilities, because that's what we're talking about. I feel we're going to be doing something on the floor here that I won't be comfortable with, because I can't think of all the ramifications now after hearing everybody speak. So I would urge the maker to refer to a committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand in opposition to either of those scenarios for the simple reason that when we enlisted the assistance of the Attorney General, we obtained assistance that was going to cost the city potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars were we to gain that assistance through private counsel. So that the assistance that we are ultimately going to need, legal assistance in this case, is enhanced by the credibility and the much more substantial resources of the Attorney General, much more substantial than those that we could presently afford. I understand that the maker of this proposal wants to see greater distribution of information. I think everyone is frustrated by the situation. We wish we could, as stewards of the Public Trust, share all of what is known in City Hall with the residents of Plum Island and other people throughout the city. They have a right to know this at a time when it doesn't compromise their best interests. I'm confident that the Attorney General's recommendation to us, which was made with the full understanding of the council, that we were to remain informed but silent about the negotiations and the specifics of this matter, were made with the best interests of the city in mind. And eventually, all of the details will come out. But it would be imprudent of us and would give the Attorney General a signal that we are not a trustworthy and discreet partner in this potential litigation if we were to adopt a resolution of this type, an order of this type, or even consider it seriously in committee. Because quite certainly, that's exactly what the interests who mis-served us on Plum Island would like to see happen. I very strongly urge the members to reject this proposal or ask the maker to withdraw it so that we can move forward and allow the Attorney General to move forward with the confidence that the Attorney General's Office knows that we are prudent and discreet and trustworthy partners in this enterprise.
Counselor Joe?
Thank you, Mr. President. With regard to our blind trust in the Attorney General's Office, I would suggest that our willingness to be good partners would be based on some past history. And the past history of the residents of the area of Pro Lane will tell you that trusting in the Attorney General to represent the best interests of the City of Newburyport and its residents is foolhardy at best. We were sold down the river by the Department of Environmental Protection and by the Attorney General on the Pro Lane landfill. We've been waiting for 12 years now for completion of a project that the state of Massachusetts assured us would only take 24 months to build. Every other weekend, neighbors in that community are subject to gaseous smells that sometimes drive them from their homes. However, we can rest assured that the state of Massachusetts had our best interest when we spent millions of taxpayer dollars putting in a water and sewer line to Plum Island, which we now find never was, depending on who you talked to, engineered properly, overseen properly, or installed properly. The fact of the matter is that the people on Plum Island are owed, and the people of all of Newburyport are owed an explanation and are telling us the facts as we know them today. I'm concerned because this is the first I've heard that we've had results from testing for some time, and I don't know if anybody on the City Council has had a discussion with anyone who's privy to the results of that bolt testing. But wouldn't it be nice for us to put aside our blind faith and actually be aware of the conditions that are going on? Trusting in the Attorney General to represent the best interests of the City of Newburyport and its citizens doesn't give me cause to say that we should continue to obfuscate or cover up the facts of the construction that went on on this Plum Island sewer and water project and assign it a blame, because there's clearly blame, there's clearly culpability, and there clearly needs to be a remedy. And continuing to wait for the powers that be on Beacon Hill to provide it is foolhardy.
Counselor Cronin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly. First off, of the 11 counselors that were involved in the executive session, I recall, I do not recall any counselor ever talking about the Plum Island Water and Sewer Project. I think that the council kept that where it should be. With that being said, there have been public meetings, there have been informational news releases, so to speak. So I would say, number one, the cat is out of the bag. I certainly don't recall any litigation strategy that would raise to any level of us showing even a pair of deuces, never mind a pair of kings. And then finally, the dollars that we're talking here are not Plum Island dollars. If there are dollars involved, there are dollars from Ward 1 to Ward 6. So this is a citywide problem, not a Plum Island problem.
Thank you, Mr. President. Agree with everything that Counselor Jones said about blind trust in the AG's office, and I find it redundant that we're going to go through this again with Plum Island. The word responsibility was mentioned earlier. We're responsible to let people know what's going on. We're responsible for the people that are paying the tax bills, again, 1 through 6, because we are paying for these failures that are happening within the system. It was mentioned about responsibility and only because it's a political season. While it seems funny, the political season, that, you know, we've had some tests back on some things for over a month and a half, and the council hasn't been privy to any of those things, and we haven't been asked to executive session. So, you know, if I fire with fire, you know, it's all hearsay and everything. But I think we owe, we owe it to the residents of Plum Island to let them know what's going on. Again, no strategies were ever spoken to or talked about before. The mayor's office has made statements about it. The Newbury Town manager has made statements about this. It was discussed in Newbury Town meetings, not under executive session, but, you know, we feel as though that, you know, we need to keep it in executive session in-house here. And I don't feel good about that. And I don't know why any other councils would feel good about hiding things from the constituency, especially in an election season. Open government, you want to know what's going on in this city. You want to know. You pay your bills, you pay your taxes, you should know. You should be privy to this information. I urge you all to vote yes on this.
Any further discussion? Counselor Earl?
Thank you, Mr. President. I feel like I'm the only person who's going to say something.
So much.
You know, I'm with Counselor Sullivan 100% in favor of open government. I'm in favor of open government. But I question whether this order is open government. I mean, clearly, open government. Executive session is part of government. It's open in government. I don't think it's open government, though. I'm with my peers in that I haven't heard any test forums, I haven't heard any, a lot of the matter that my fellow colleagues have mentioned, and I must add, Mr. President, that I feel conflicted from the perspective that many of the Newburyport residents who are watching this meeting right now probably have no idea what we're talking about. And so I have no idea how I'm going to vote.
Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I must address the Counselor Ward, Ward 1's personal attack on me, my integrity, and my motivations. My motivation is simply to inform people that are paying for a service that there are problems with it and what to expect with those, with that, with the problems from those services. Because they're ultimately going to pay for it, one way or the other. So, you know, I am insulted by your remarks, okay? And as I said before, the wording on this is very simple. Ongoing problems with Plum Island sewer and water services. It's not asking for anything more than to inform them that they're having problems down there. When we came in on a Saturday morning for an executive session, I heard from at least three Plum Island residents on Sunday morning that knew exactly what took place in this room. And I just let it go. I didn't say a word. The people on Plum Island know that there is something going on, and they think that we're keeping it behind closed doors. All I am asking is that they be informed of the problems down there. Now, if it makes anybody feel any better, if somebody in this room thinks that I'm making political hay here, I'll change my motion to table this or send it to committee, if it makes you feel any better. Okay?
I will apologize if you think I was insulting. That was not my intention. The residents that I have spoken to on Plum Island have heard the opposite of what you just said. So I am defending them. I speak to people who are in support of you. I ask, you know, what is it with Counselor Sullivan? Why are you supporting him? And I've heard things, so we can go back and forth here. I don't want to go back and forth here. I'm not here to do that. I am representing my constituents on Plum Island, and this is what the majority, if not all, I've spoken to have asked me to do, have asked me to say. I apologize.
Any further discussion? Motion is to approve, unless you want to make a motion to table or to send to committee. Move the question.
Roll call. It's a motion to approve, order number two. Counselor Derrigan?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Present.
Counselor Harquist?
No.
Counselor Hearsaw?
Present.
Counselor Hutchinson is absent. Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
No.
Counselor Connel?
No.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, yeses. Motion being six. Motion fails. Order three. Order three is...
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, yeses. Motion being six, motion fails. Order three. Order three is dated September 30th. Pursuant to chapters 40, section 15 and 15A, the city council of City of Newburyport hereby determines that said permanent easements of city-owned property located at 115 Water Street and described in an order of taking file with Essex South Registry will allow the owners of lots located at 113, 117, and 119 Water Street to access by foot vehicle those parcels of land depicted as parcels A, B, and C on plan entitled Plan of Land for the facility at 115 Water Street dated January 17, 2013.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President, I'm going to have to recuse myself from discussion as I'm a member of the American Yacht Club, which may have an interest in this particular motion.
I'm sorry, the second one? Thank you. Further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. There are representatives from the DPS here. If perhaps any council have any questions. Otherwise, this is clearly an item which I understand the solicitor requires us to do.
Further discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Vote?
What about block party?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Harquist?
Yes.
Counselor Hirshardt?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Bryan is not here.
Here.
Thank you.
The one to supplemental budget, number one, FY14.
Regent's follow, city council of City of Newburyport approves the mayor's supplemental budget request, number one, FY 2014 in the amount of $284,526. Would you like me to list?
Motion to refer to budget finance.
I agree. What it is before both committees? Counselor Cameron, counsel? Thank you.
Comprehensive zoning review, $60,000. Sidewalk repairs, $60,000. Minor roadway repairs, $50,000. Leaf debris loaders, $7,000. Potlet mal signage, $2,500. Greenleaf fire station asbestos and bacon, $30,000. Greenleaf fire station dispatch console system, $35,593. City clerk's office counting system, $11,036. Microsoft license, $8,480. Mobile data terminal, $6,417. Copier scanners, $13,500 submitted, Edward C. Cameron.
All favor, both.
Mr. President, I would ask that at this time, we approve the $60,000 comprehensive zoning review as we have the opportunity to move that forward with a consultant and then allow the rest to be. I'm sorry, is there anything else that wants to be taken out and acted on tonight? Barlet Mal? And approval of Barlet Mal line item? And then the rest be submitted to budget finance?
Second.
What did I say?
So $60,000 zoning review and $2,500 barlet?
Yes.
What is it, long mal, sir? Long mal. Slant, $2,500. Counselor Earls?
I just want to speak to the Barlet Mal. I mean, it is, it's really, it should be a city priority at this point. There's children touching the water, there's people still feeding the ducks. It's getting worse as we speak because of these. So it's just a small line item to really push what could become a bigger health hazard. So I just want scientists, that's all we're looking for. I would call it an emergency.
Counselor Cronin?
You would allow a friendly amendment? I'd also ask to approve the $60,000 in sidewalk repair.
What sidewalk?
I'll second the amendment. So we have to wait.
Figure, if it's the sidewalks, it's just a amount of money that you want to put into the.
It's just the amount.
It wasn't listed, I don't think.
No, there isn't a list associated with this particular request. This is part of the city's commitment when they accepted the meals tax to appropriate $50,000, or 50%, excuse me, from the prior year actual receipts of meals tax.
There was not a list. Does the DPDW have a list?
Yes. Absolutely. I will provide it to the council in the next council package. Remember what's been done and what's planned to be done.
So we have to vote on it to see what's in it. I'm kidding.
Nancy? Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to know, if we fund this tonight, is that going to take effect before the snow flies? Or will that, that $60,000 for sidewalks to approve tonight, will that work in this year?
No, there's ongoing sidewalks work that has been contracted with this prior fiscal year's money that's ongoing now. The money that will be appropriated through this initial supplemental budget request will be done next spring.
So what's the rush?
Thank you. Exactly, why are we rushing this? If it's something that we're appropriating money now?
Counselor Jones?
I'll ask, I'll ask the counter to that, which is, it's a fait accompli, the list, while I think the list is actually written in pencil until the president gets a chance to look at it. The list, the list. Work force got plenty of dead sidewalks coming, I can see. The list, the list exists. However, what we gain from sending it to committee to continue to discuss the list or to continue to discuss the funding, it's a fait accompli. What we don't, because of the change in chapter 90, thanks to his honor, the governor withholding what the legislator, what the legislature earmarked for us, we won't get all of the sidewalks that we had planned for this year. So this $60,000 will simply be going toward finishing up this year's list and beginning next year's list and seeing whether or not we're held hostage yet again on that.
Counselor Crowe?
Just on sidewalk repair. I think over the past four years, the council in general has been very, very proactive in sidewalk repair. Example is the 15% meals tax. I think that this is a, another way that this council can show its commitment to sidewalks in the community, number one. And number two, that because as Counselor Jones has said, we have got a very late start. Hopefully, instead of spinning our wheels, we can have sidewalk projects in the pipeline with boots in the ground as soon as there's a thaw in the spring. And we may as well just get this final to DPS and get going with this. I think it's that important.
Well, grab your defibrillators. I agree with both Councilors Jones and Cronin. Just a comment about this. When I first came on the council, we spent $25,000 a year on sidewalks. We upped it to $50,000, some of you may recall, at one point in that process. Now we're up to $135,000. We're working on a backlog. I think we did something prudent a couple of years. I haven't seen any reason, given the fact that we have made this commitment to hold this up any longer. We can act easily on this and it's something that, you know, for walking the streets, the sidewalks in Newburyport is painfully evident that needs to be done. So I encourage the action on it tonight.
Counselor Jones?
Mr. President, did the record reflect that both councilors Cronin and Connell mentioned Merrimack Street as a priority? I just don't know if that, I thought I read that. Merrimack Street, Merrimack.
When I see the list in pencil, I'll tell you.
Thank you.
So the motion now is 122,500, is that correct?
Yes.
And there was a second?
There was a second, yep.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Darvin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Harquist?
Yes.
Counselor Hirshardt?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Bryan?
Yes. The wire to I D S is?
Order number four.
Five.
Four, five, four.
I believe that part of that motion was for us.
Was to refer to budget finance.
Yeah.
Thank you. Rest of budget finance.
Sorry, Mr. President, for not speaking more clearly. Elucidating as a.
Busy phone, a dig at the president, so you're not even hearing.
Did he mention Merrimack Street?
Most of it.
And that street with a round?
Lot of lot. Maybe someone.
Order five is the Leifach. Great, thank you very much. I think that I actually, I have it, I'll just show it just in case. Date, September 30. Whereas the mission of the fire department is to provide a variety of emergency and non-emergency services designed to protect the lives and property of Newburyport residents and visitors through aggressive fire control, quality free hospital emergency medical care, fire prevention, prevention, public education, and effective scene management. Whereas the provision of free hospital emergency medical care is an integral part of the Newburyport Fire Department's mission, whereas the fire-based provision of EMS has been adopted by numerous municipalities throughout the country and may potentially be a more effective and efficient method of providing emergency medical services than contracting for EMS services. Now therefore be it resolved that the Newburyport City Council urges the mayor and fire chief to explore the possibility through a cost benefit analysis of whether or not a fire-based provision of EMS services could potentially be of benefit to the city of Newburyport. Co-sponsored counselors Harquist, Cronin, and Connell.
Move for approval.
Second. Discussion. Counselor Darvin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to know, is the fire department going to come back and ask for money for this?
I can answer that, Counselor.
Yeah.
Probably not. In some of the other communities that this has been done in, like the town of Amesbury or City of Amesbury now, it's actually a moneymaker for them. They've been doing it for a long time and they, they use it to supplement impact other services within the fire department besides the ambulance. It takes a vote, but they, but they use it for those ideas. I think that it's probably a good idea to explore this. It was something that I tried to encourage when I was, when I was on the fire department and I know that there were several people out there that are willing to work for this. But like any business, it's going to take a couple of years before you see a profit. So I think it's a good idea to have the mayor and probably public safety and the fire chief sit down and do a cost analysis.
Counselor Hirshardt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I urge the mayor and the fire chief to review a copy of which is on the school department's website. There is a link to a 2007 report issued by a task force. Counselor Connell served on that task force along with a number of other individuals in the city. And one of the outcomes of that report was the recommendation that one way of increasing revenues in the school departments and the city as a whole is by implementing EMS services in the city. So some of those cost analyses were done some many years back. They probably need to be revised, but that is a starting point that again, I urge the individuals to listen.
Does anyone in the council feel that the public safety committee should be involved, so just the mayor or the fire chief? We always say we'd like to be involved in what's going on in the city and if there's a chance to have some city council president, but that's up to.
Counselor Earl?
What will happen is we will have the, we will have to be part of the study, I don't think. That study could be brought to us for the eventual funding. Obviously, there's going to be some purchasing done. So I think, we don't, I don't see the reason why anybody here has to be part of the study and that's all this is asking for. It's a cost benefit analysis. So I think, I feel comfortable.
Further discussion then? Roll call?
Motion approved, order number five. Counselor Darvin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Harquist?
Yes.
Counselor Hirshardt?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes. The wire to I D S is?
Second reading ordinance number one, section 2-30, performance of duties of mayor upon absence of disability. Insert a new section, section 2-30. Whenever by reason of sickness, disability, absence from the city, or other cause, the mayor shall be unable to perform the duties of the office. The president of the city council shall be the acting mayor and perform said duties in accordance with section 3-8 of the charter. Jointly submitted, Counselors O'Brien and Sullivan.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion? Roll call?
Approve ordinance number one, second reading. Counselor Darvin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Harquist?
Yes.
Counselor Hirshardt?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Bryan?
Yes.
The second on that was? Thank you. Order two, second reading. 2-62 residency requirement, delete the same, insert a new section-262. Reads as follows, unless otherwise allowed by law, regulation, ordinance, or by this charter, all members of a multiple-member body must be residents of the city at all times during their entire term of office. If a member of a multiple-member body rules from the city during the term for which appointed, such seat shall immediately be deemed vacant and fully filled in the manner provided for in section 3-3 of the charter. Jointly submitted, Counselors O'Brien and Sullivan.
Motion to approve.
Aye.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Darvin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Hirshardt?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Bryan?
Yes.
Sorry, Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Bryan again? Thank you.
Same vote.
Number three? Counselor three, ordinance number three, delete 2-126, insert a new. 2-126 reads as follows, commencing with the inauguration of the mayor in January 2014 and continuing thereafter, the annual salary of the mayor shall be $98,000 plus $3,000 annual expense allowance. Jointly submitted, Counselors O'Brien and Sullivan.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion? Roll call?
Counselor Darvin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Harquist?
Yes.
Counselor Hirshardt?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Present.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Bryan?
Yes.
Number four? Motion to move to table?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Close?
Motion to approve.
Second. Read about special meetings, please.
2-29 special meetings. Special meetings of the council shall be held at the call of the president or at the call of any six or more members for any purpose. By causing a notice of the meetings to be delivered in hand or to the place of business or residence of each member of the council. Notice shall, except in emergency cases.
Of which the president shall be the sole judge. Be delivered at least 48 weekday hours in advance of the time set. Shall specify the purpose or purposes for which the meeting is to be held. Copy of the notice shall be immediately posted.
B. Mayor may at all time call special meetings to the council for any purpose by causing a notice of the meeting to be delivered in hand or to the place of purpose... to the place of business or residence of each member of the city council. This notice shall, except in emergencies, which the mayor shall be the sole judge, be delivered at least forty-eight weekday hours in advance of the time set. Shall specify the purpose or purposes for which the meeting is to be held. Copy of the notice shall be immediately posted jointly submitted. Counselors O'Brien and Sullivan.
Move to approve.
Second. This is first reading.
It is.
Yes. Move to receive. Counsel Sullivan.
Very quickly, I mean, we met tonight, and we voted three to nothing in committee to take this off of the table tonight and bring it back to you. The questions at the last meeting, I think, had a lot to do with the wording, and tonight during the meeting, we checked, and this ordinance is word for word of what's in the new charter approved by the voters about two years ago.
First reading. Do we need a roll call for first reading?
We do need a roll call for first reading.
Thank you for the question.
What is the proper term for it?
Just my understanding of a misunderstanding. This item's still on the table, so I can come off the table to...
We did that.
My apologies. Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. President. Because it's first reading, then we receive and file and wait for approval on second reading. Is that correct? So the motion is to receive and file?
I'm...
For ordinance.
For ordinance. For ordinance.
For appointments, it is.
Appointments, it is.
Receive and file then second reading.
Ordinance, yeah.
Correct.
I sit corrected then.
I'm correct once a year, so I think I'm right here. Roll call, please. Counselor Darvin.
Yes.
Counselor Earl's.
Yes.
Counselor Harquist.
Yes.
Counselor Hirsarg.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Five. Take a motion, get it off the table.
Motion to remove from the table.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Sullivan.
Wasn't ready for you there, Mr. President, but here goes. This was... This one is just directing that all personnel files will be in one central location with the human resources director.
Any further discussion? Roll call. It's approval of two dash one twenty-eight. Counselor Darvin.
Yes.
Counselor Earl.
Yes.
Counselor Harquist.
Yes.
Counselor Hirsarg.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
No.
Counselor Sullivan.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien. Yes. Take a motion to take six and seven off the table.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Number six, please.
Motion to approve.
Motion to receive and file.
I'll take that motion back.
Second.
Discussion on number six.
I know, but the second was on the motion to receive and file. Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No roll call, sorry. These guys are stickling in front of me, so... Likes to make checks. To receive and file, ordinance number six. Counselor Darvin.
Yes.
Counselor Earl's.
Yes.
Counselor Harquist.
Yes.
Counselor Hirsarg.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
I'll take another motion.
Motion to approve.
Remove from the table. Ordinance number seven.
It's already been removed. Need a motion to either approve or receive and file.
Receive and file.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call. Number seven, receive and file. Counselor Darvin.
Yes.
Counselor Earl's.
Yes.
Counselor Harquist.
Yes.
Counselor Hirsarg.
Yes.
Counselor Jones. Counselor Sullivan.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien. Yes. We want a committee reports, budget and finance. Yes, Mr. President.
Motion to remove the first item, which is the amended ordinance on interest on water and sewer bills.
Second motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Go ahead.
Mr. President, motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. Counselor Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget and finance met last week, and this was also posted as a committee of the whole, and we voted three to zero in favor of this. Ethan Manning from the Water and Sewer Department is here if we have any further questions. But basically, this is changing, and this was approved by each of the Water and Sewer Commissions, I believe, and as we know, they're joined together. Currently, any late bill on water and sewer, there is a fifteen-dollar late fee that's quarterly. So if you have a hundred-dollar bill that you're late on and you're late for four quarters, you're going to get charged fifteen times four quarters, sixty dollars. If you owe ten thousand dollars, you are going to get charged fifteen dollars each quarter for sixty dollars. So the way it's structured now, an analogy that we talked about the other night is sort of like if you were... This won't be a poker analogy either. Thank you. If you were speeding on Route ninety-five and going seventy-five miles an hour, and you got a ten-dollar ticket, or if you were speeding at a hundred and twenty miles an hour and you got a ten-dollar ticket, there's just no proportionality to it. So the recommendation is to go to a fourteen percent per year percentage late penalty. Essentially, this would mean that the people who had small late amounts would pay less, and Ethan Manning distributed a spreadsheet about that earlier. So if you were behind on a hundred dollars, you would pay fourteen percent, fourteen dollars plus this five-dollar late fee. If you, under the new scheme of fourteen percent, if you had a very large bill, you would pay proportionally a lot more than you're paying now. So to me, it's a way to, you know, make the penalty, because it is a penalty, fit the amount that we were behind. We asked in committee if this was revenue neutral or not. It actually is. It's within a couple of thousand dollars of what... Last year, there was seventy-four thousand dollars collected. If you did it by this fourteen percent, it actually, I think, we would have collected seventy-six thousand dollars or something, you know, just within it. So it's not really... It's not punishing anybody anymore. It is just really giving people incentive with the large bills just to pay up. And, you know, approximately each year, we have seven hundred, eight hundred delinquent accounts, and there was some data that was sent to you earlier. And most communities are doing it this way, whether they have enterprise funds, and it seemed sensible to us, so we voted to approve it three to zero. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call. Counselor Sullivan.
May I address Mr. Manning?
Sure.
Might as well get up. You got comfortable shoes on tonight? No, my question is on this. How many people that are delinquent are actually having a problem paying the bill because of finances of their own? How many people that are delinquent in their water and sewer bills are actually delinquent because they can't afford to make the payments? Do you have any idea?
We wouldn't know why they can't pay. We'd be speculating.
Nobody ever walks into your office and says, "I can't pay because I can't afford it."
I mean, yeah.
Pay the full amount. Let me redirect the question in another way, then. Is there any type of services that the Water and Sewer provide to help these people make these payments without a penalty?
Yes. In the past, there have been some customers with abnormally large bills where the Water and Sewer Commissions have allowed them to apportion it over a number of years.
Without a penalty?
That's correct, and those are still in place.
Okay. Thank you.
City Clerk, read the whole section. Two dash three ninety-two states, an interest charge of fourteen percent per annum shall be made on water and sewer bills remaining unpaid thirty-one days after the issue date as specified on the quarterly bill. A demand charge of five dollars shall be added to any water and sewer account that remains unpaid and delinquent until the final bill is issued in that fiscal year. Submitted, Counselor Cameron. Any further discussion? Roll call, then, please. Counselor Darvin.
Yes.
Counselor Earl's.
Yes.
Counselor Harquist.
Yes.
Counselor Hirsarg.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien. No. Anything else?
Yes, Mr. President. Motion to remove item number two from committee.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President, motion to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Mr. President, thank you. This item is in regards to the administrative Teamsters contract. This was... Has been in negotiation. This is a tentative agreement between the city and that union. As you may recall, there are seventeen employees in that bargaining unit. In your packet, what we were given earlier this month is the changes. And just to briefly say, these are... The reason we're voting on this, the money has already been appropriated for fiscal year fourteen. That was included in the operating budget under contingency for these types of negotiations. The reason we need to vote on this is because there are financial implications for the future. So this year would be a one... A one-point-zero percent COLA. The following two fiscal years, one-point-five in each year. There have been some significant givebacks, I guess would be the word, with the union agreeing for five-plus days of vacation time for new employees, some changes to sick leave buyback and sick leave language that's going to help manage the workforce, and some other changes around progressive discipline that's more consistent with other union contracts. We were given some additional information today. The financial implications are fairly small. It's in the single thousands, I believe, from email that we were all sent earlier today, and Counselor Hutchinson had asked for that information. And we were also sent the current contract. And again, I think the changes in the language are good for the city. Those are pretty reasonable COLA increases, and if you read the article about the Boston... City of Boston negotiations with their fire department unions, Sunday, there were some really incredible increases happening in other municipalities. So I think our employees deserve some thanks for being reasonable and knowing that we are not, you know...
Not...
Not swimming in money. So we did approve it three to zero and asked for your support.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Anything else?
Yes, Mr. President. Motion to remove item number three.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counselor Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you would indulge us in budget and finance, we asked for a very, very short presentation from Auditor Squillis. Sometimes we get these reports about the final year expenditures, and they quickly get lost or ignored. And I think it would be good just to take a quick look at that, and if that would be okay for the President. Mr. Squillis can give a quick...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill Squillis, Finance Director. As you know, the budget process is a very comprehensive process. It starts with the city crunching numbers to see exactly what we need. Then, after several months of evaluation and coming up with cost estimates, the city council for several weeks goes over these numbers and comes up with an appropriation, approval of the mayor's recommendation in terms of what the city needs and to protect the taxpayers' money. This last year, fiscal year 2013, the total appropriation was over fifty-two million dollars. That money was spent in a variety of ways. But the bottom line is, is that through that evaluation process that involved the city council, originated with the mayor and the staff, the city came in within one-point-three percent of that projection. And I think that's a tremendous compliment to not only the administration and to the staff, but to the city council, because to come in that close in these times of fiscal difficulties, of challenges, I think is a great accomplishment. What that resulted in, in terms of dollars, is just about six-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand dollars left over. Now, that sounds like a lot of money, and it is a lot of money, but it only represents one-point-three percent of what the city council approved back last June. That is in the general fund. The general fund, as you know, is the city government departments, less the water, the sewer, and the harbor master's office, which are enterprise funds. Enterprise funds function like private businesses in a way, in that they charge a fee, and those fees have to support the activities that are provided and the services that are provided to the public. In some of these cases, there are variables. For example, in the harbor master's office, a lot of the variables depend on the weather and what their needs are in staffing and what their needs are for materials and supplies. The harbor master's office spent only eighty-three percent of the appropriation, which meant are reverted to in dollars and cents was sixty-four thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars left over from that appropriation. Their original appropriation was a little over three-hundred thousand. In the Water and Sewer Department, in the Water Department, the Water Department came within ninety-four percent of the appropriation, leaving two-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand unspent. And also with the Sewer Department, it was a little bit more. They spent eighty-six-point-four percent of their appropriation with eight-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, six-ninety-three left over. Now, the major reason for Water and Sewer, as you know, there was a tremendous amount of work that was done in the sewer plants and the water plants this past year, and there was a reduction in consumption that resulted in a lot of electrical charges, operational charges, chemical charges were reduced. So that is part of the reason why those particular departments did not spend closer to a hundred percent. Couple of the other areas, just to point out, and again, I hate to mention it, because I know the staff is anxious to start with the budget process again, but we're getting ready to start the budget process again. And that will involve dealing... Working with you, the Budget and Finance Committee, to look at every expenditure this year, see exactly what we spent in detail, and why we need additional money next year, or why that line item can be cut. And also, as you know, the city council approved the mayor's recommendation that this is a whole new budget process in that we approve the budget by categories, by salaries, personal, personal expenses, supplies, capital, outlay, other services. All these budget categories are lumped together and create the department budget. But the departments have the ability to move money within each of these categories, which, and I'm sure Counselor Jones is happy about this, you haven't seen much of me this last year, because the transfers really have been quite minimal, and you haven't had to deal with a lot of the very small procedural transfers that really the administration can handle without having to have time spent... City Council spending time with those. So that has worked extremely well and has given the city an opportunity to manage without having to get tied down with a lot of the financial burdens of financial management. For example, as you know, we have a new fire chief, and which is certainly a very comprehensive process to select a new chief, to bring in consultants to help with that selection process, to bring in candidates from really from all over the country. And that process cost an additional twenty thousand dollars that really wasn't budgeted. However, there were expenses in the salary line item for the fire department that provided extra funds, so that the city council didn't need to approve a transfer. That money was available because of those savings, and the city was able to do that without appropriating any additional money or actually any more taxes being asked of the residents, because money was within the budget. It was just managed more effectively. The fire department also had a number of retirements, and the money, which now is in a different system for retirements, is now in a special fund, which will be appropriated each year as it's needed, and then carried over each year if that money's not needed. each year as it's needed, and then carried over each year if that money's not needed. But this last past year, the fire department did need additional money for some of those The overtime, unfortunately, in the fire department was over the appropriated amount by $98,000. Again, because of the excess money in the personal service and because of the retirements, there was money to cover much of this. The fire department, I'm sorry, the police department, and we're going to talk about overtime, and I know everybody's interested in overtime, came in very close to their appropriation. They were just about a little over $3,900 over their appropriation. But again, because of the ability to manage money within that personal services category, did not have to come back to the city council to ask for more money. They found the money within that category. There'll be additional questions, I'm sure, but that's a very brief overview and a little sample of what is a result of this past year's financial operations. Be happy to answer additional questions and certainly look forward to the budget review when we will get into the real details of each line item.
Counsel Hirsug?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could just ask a quick follow-up to either Mr. Squillis or, or Mr. Manning, for that matter. Water and sewer, year-end, water department approximately 94 percent was used, sewer department approximately 84 percent was used. You explained the reasons why. My question is, is looking forward to the next year, two years, three years, and so forth, should we expect to see similar numbers, or should it be closer to the upper 90s in terms of percentage used?
I'd be happy to speak to that. And we had discussed this during the budget process, especially in regards to the bio solids line item. As you know, there's been work ongoing at the sewer plant for the past several years. And as a result, you've noticed a tent over there, they haven't been operating at full capacity. So as a result, electricity costs have gone down, heat costs have gone down, chemical costs have gone down. But that's because they're operating out of a tent, and as you know, they're not operating at full capacity. So once they are, you know, done, hopefully later this year, we should be able to see those costs, you know, level off to where they should be, and then we can properly budget for them.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I may speak for the council in saying that we all miss seeing Mr. Squillis a lot. It's kind of like in a television analogy, bringing Alex Trebek to a sitcom. And I personally appreciate your ability to make perfect sense to me of some of these things that baffle me, so thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Thank you. Anything else coming up?
Mr. President, just one other item. This is item number four, motion to remove from committee.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Motion to approve.
Second. Question, Council Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a procedural thing that it's new to us. So this is the transfer of $390,810 from General Administration compensated absences into a new reserve account. We created this a few months ago in the FY14 budget process. In the past, sick leave buyback and other compensated absences were put in the line items in the budget. I believe they were spread throughout the departments. I may be wrong about that, gets a little blurry, as we know. But this is a way for all of those to be aggregated together and spent for those purposes. And it gives a little more cushion, because again, it's hard to exactly predict within a department how your expenditures are going to go, but when you're operating out of a larger pool, it's not going to make one department look bad if they had to do a buyback. And we'll be doing this, this will be one of these we do every year. And it's a little bit separate from the operating budget, so I imagine there'll be a rollover next year, whatever's not spent, and then some additional monies would need to be appropriated from the operating budget into that. But that's essentially what that's all about. We approved it three to zero.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Me.
That's it for Budget and Finance, General Government?
Mr. President? Motion to remove item number one from committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question, Council Sullivan?
I'll defer any questions to Mr. Lombardi.
Have the city clerk read partially what this is about?
Just want to make sure what we're talking about, intermunicipal agreement, animal control.
Animal control. We already approved the other one.
It goes on for a number of pages. If I might try to summarize.
We can let Mr. Lombardi summarize. He's done it very well, about 10 times, so.
I defer to Mr. Lombardi anytime.
Thank you, Herr Jones. So what's before you is an intermunicipal agreement with the town of West Newbury for shared services for animal control. The Board of Selectmen for West Newbury has already approved this agreement. The arrangement is essentially that Newbury Port will take the lead, they'll be the lead municipality. It's a one-year agreement with two options for additional years going out. Newbury Port will employ its current full-time animal control officer and will hire an additional part-time on-call position. West Newbury will pay the city $20,000 annually, and that number was included as a projected revenue in the FY14 budget. We anticipate approximately $10,000 to cover the additional on-time, on-call, part-time animal control position. So essentially, the city is net $10,000 as part of this agreement. We also have use of the West Newbury animal control van, which is a much better vehicle than we currently have.
Any questions? Council Connel?
One question, Mr. Lombardi. The employees will be on whose books, and are we going to be responsible for the retirement benefits for the employees at the end of their careers?
So we currently, the city currently has one full-time employee who's a member of the Teamsters Administrative Assistance Bargaining Unit, and the new person coming on will be on-time, part-call, and therefore won't be in part of the retirement system. So we're not adding any personnel in terms of those obligations.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Approve the intermunicipal agreement with the West Newbury for animal control services, Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Harquist?
Yes.
Counselor Hirsug?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connel?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Deraven?
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien?
Yes.
Request to remove item number two from General Government Committee.
Second.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
We already approved that.
Good, still in that packet.
I don't care. Best to my knowledge, we approved the last meeting. I can look in my notes.
The Veterans IMA was approved at the last meeting. There's still a Veterans Home Rule petition, which is in committee, and that will remain in committee for now.
Right, that remains in committee, right.
Okay, never mind. Never mind.
But number three?
Yep, motion to remove number three from committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Question?
Well, if I could actually suggest, actually, I believe coming out of committee was, I was not part of this vote, I was only listening, I believe coming out of committee is an amended version. Is that correct?
Mended version, right. And amended version was to have annual report during budget time by all committees.
Do you have a copy of this, Mr. Clerk?
I don't. Is it an insertion of?
So if you wouldn't mind reading, just changing biannual to annual?
I'd be happy to. So this is Section 64, biannual report to be made. It reads as follows, "City boards, committees, commissions, and authorities are established by ordinance or whose members are confirmed by city councils shall make a biannual report to council on all matters coming under its jurisdiction." Does that contain the changed language?
Annual report.
So you're changing biannual to annual.
Correct.
Correct.
Move to approve as amended, then.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Approved as amended.
Roll call? Vote on amendment?
Vote on amendment? Roll call. Roll call.
We've rolled calling the amendment.
So again, to avoid confusion, that's a roll call on the motion to approve as amended. That's changing the word from biannual to annual. Counselor Earls? Yes, she's put in order, you started with Counsel Deraven all night. You know, I have to confess something. I ran out of that sheet, I moved to the last sheet. But you're right.
You made me do all those roll calls. I told you, I shouldn't have to.
I'm filing a protest.
Run our 18.
Do them all over again.
So Deraven's vote doesn't count.
I did think I would slip that by you, but I got caught, I'm sorry. Let me start again. Counselor Deraven?
Yes.
Counselor Earl?
Yes.
Counselor Harquist?
Yes.
Counselor Hirsug?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Is still absent.
Counselor Jones? Much like my mind. Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connel?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien?
Yes.
Joint Education?
Nothing at this time.
License and permits?
Yes, motion to remove, application for new flammable combustible liquids license from committee.
Second.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Question, Counsel Earls?
Motion to receive and file simply because we had a public hearing, which was mandated, and came out approved, so we can receive and file to eliminate it from committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Neighborhood and city services?
Nothing at this time.
Planning and development?
Nothing at this time.
Hallelujah. Public safety?
Yes, motion to remove item five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Go ahead.
Motion to receive and file.
Second. Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Neighborhood and city services?
Nothing at this time.
Planning and development?
Nothing at this time.
Hallelujah. Public safety?
Yes, motion to remove item five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Go ahead.
Motion to receive and file.
Second. Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Anything else?
Item six, motion to remove Loco Sports Off Marathon.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question, Counsel Cronin?
This is, I believe, the third annual race. It's mostly in neighboring community of West Newbury. It starts and ends at the high school, and it's all women and one lucky guy.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Anything else?
One last, motion to remove item seven, spooky rail trail Halloween case.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Thank you. Anything else? That it? Public utilities? Rules Committee?
Nothing. Nothing to report.
Go to the order. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moves.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Thank you.
I don't know what happened to it. I thought I put everything back in order, but.
Oh, I know.
Criticize Richard Silver. You implied that I was. Oh, okay. I know.